Everybody please find your seat quietly so we can get started this evening. Good evening, welcome to the May 5, 2021 Combined Violent Board of Education meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Berman.
Ms. Costa?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Present.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Soprano?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
And Mr. English?
Here.
You have a constituted quorum, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone and Happy Teachers Appreciation Week. At this time... What do we got? Also Bus Driver Appreciation Week and Nurses Week. Holy Toledo. Anything about plumbers? Alright, that being said, let's all rise for the flag salute, please. Mr. Berman, do we have a resolution for executive session this evening?
Yes, we do. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the City of Violin School District will convene into executive session for the following reasons as outlined in NJSA 10:4-12. The discussion is about pending litigation matters, employment matters, and any matter falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as an attorney.
Do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Soprano?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
And Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. English, if I could, before we begin with our program, I just on behalf of the board and all of us here at central office, we'd just like to ask if we could please have a moment of silence for those of you who do not know, we lost one of our seniors this past week, he was hit by a car riding a bike, and his mother is also one of our security guards at Wallace School, so if we could please take a moment to have a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grigio. At this time, Dr. Grigio, special presentations.
Yes, okay. Tonight, we honor the Governor's Teachers of the Year and the Educational Service Professionals from last year and this year. Unfortunately, we were not able to have this format last year, so we thought we would take this opportunity to recognize both tonight. So, I would like to call forward Mrs. Sneeden, Dr. Sneeden, she's going to read the names, and Mr. English and I will be handing out the certificates and the gift.
Good evening. We're going to begin with 2019 and 2020 Governor's Education of the Year Program. Our first school is Vineland High School, from the English Department, 17 years, Mr. James Lapsley. And our educational professional from the Guidance Department with 12 years of service, Mr. Paul Myers. And company. She wants a picture. From AMSA, Mrs. Megan Schultz, from the Social Studies Department. From Wallace School, Mrs. Amanda Biggs. And our educational professional from Wallace School, Mrs. Colleen Biggs. From Memorial School, from the English Department, Mrs. Jacqueline Moratelli. And our educational professional from Memorial School, Mrs. Maria Gaunt. From Sergeant Dominic Pilla Middle School, from the English Department, Mrs. Natalie Lopez. And the paraprofessional, Mrs. Teresa Janetta. From Barcy School, 3rd grade teacher, Mrs. Linda Fields. And also from Barcy, our paraprofessional, Mrs. Patricia Davis. From Petway School, 3rd grade teacher, Mrs. Angelino Tedesco Weaver. And the social worker, Mrs. Leslie Smith. From Winslow School, 1st through 3rd grade elementary school teacher, Mrs. Karen Lad Gillespie. And the educational professional, the nurse, Mrs. Denise Ferrari. From Duran School, kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Melanie Smith. And paraprofessional, Mrs. Lori Rusnak. From DePaulito School, 1st grade teacher, Mrs. Christina DeChino. And the paraprofessional, Mrs. Aneta Slawinski. From Many School, 1st grade teacher, Mrs. Tara Meyerson. And social worker, Mrs. Wendy O'Donnell. Congrats. From Sabatera School, kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Tamika Nelson Dawkins. And speech specialist, Mrs. Anissa Anderson. From Rossi School, 2nd grade teacher, Mrs. Diane Rodriguez. Also from Rossi School, 25-year paraprofessional, Mrs. Janet Hedley. From Delago School, pre-K teacher, Mrs. Maureen Barreras. Also from Delago, student assistance coordinator, Mrs. Jamie Mullenelli Bragg. Okay. We're now fast-forwarding to this year, so congratulations to the 2019-20 winners. Certainly worth the wait. Okay, 2020-2021 Educator of the Year. Vineland High School, English teacher, Lindsay Bowers. Also from Vineland High School, 31-year guidance counselor, Elise Matricino. From AMSA, 22-years, 5th to 8th grade social studies teacher, Ms. Tara Pachoni. From Wallace School, English teacher, Carol Hill. And also from Wallace, guidance counselor Pamela Scagnelli. From Veterans Memorial School, 21-year STEAM teacher, John Jack Martin. And paraprofessional Frederick Harris. From Sergeant Dominic Pilla Middle School, 18-year math teacher, Natalie Quackenbush. Also from Pilla, 19-year child study team member, Dawn Bernard. From Barcy School, 12-years in the 3rd grade, Ms. Tiffany Valles. And 8-year paraprofessional, Shanuel Miller. From Petway School, 34-years in kindergarten, Lisa Mastro Giovanni. And special education aide for 18-years, Ellen Williams. From Winslow School, 8-years in kindergarten and 1st grade, Tierney Titter Murray. Also from Winslow School, 4-year paraprofessional, Melissa Munoz. From Duran School, 22-year 1st grade teacher, Gina Scotty. And paraprofessional Caroline Monero. From DePaulito School, 1st grade teacher, Kimberly Hop. And also from DePaulito, library media specialist, Julie Testa. From Many School, 20-years in the Music and Drama Department, Christopher Hannah. Also from Many School, 14-year library and media specials, Alexis Cartehania. From Sabatera School, 16-years special educator, Yamalet Almanzar. And 30-year guidance counselor, Wendy Osborne. Are you kidding me? See ya. You leaving? Where you going? You gonna go out there? You can't go out there, you guys stay right here. From Rossi School, 4th grade teacher, Amber Igorov. And 21-year paraprofessional, Karen Penizzato. From Delago School, 10-year preschool teacher, Amanda Batino. Also from Delago, paraprofessional, Christina Marquez Diaz. Congratulations, everyone.
We apologize, the last person that we recognized is Christian, and we said it wrong, so I'm sorry for that. And congratulations to all of our recipients, we are so proud to work with such great people. And for last year's people, I'm sorry you had to wait, but thank you for the job you do each and every day, we're so proud to work with you. Also, your new superintendent is with us this evening, Mr. Yano, he's in the back, if you want to stand, we welcome you. Okay, that's the end of presentations.
Thank you, Dr. Grigio. And Dr. Sneeden, thank you.
I'm sorry, my fault. We also have another presentation this evening, and I'd like to call forward Mrs. Kristen Speakman to do that presentation. Oh, you're already there. I'm sorry. I'm a little slow tonight. It's the heat.
That's okay, Dr. Grugio. It's the heat.
Oh, my goodness. Mrs. Speakman is going to recognize our administrators of the year for last year and for this year.
Good evening, Dr. Grugio and members of the Board of Education and community. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize two outstanding administrators. I'm currently the president of the Vineland Administrators and Supervisors Association, and we have 38 members, consisting of principals, assistant principals, and supervisors. Each year, we nominate members to receive the Administrator of the Year award. This nomination comes directly from their peers. This year, we have the pleasure to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of a building administrative team, and they truly exemplify the word "team." Wallace Principal Deborah Quinn received the 2019-2020 Administrator of the Year Award. Several of her peers nominated her, and all of the written nominations echoed her commitment to excellence and ability to build a sense of school community. A portion of her nomination reads, "Debbie has taken Wallace Middle School to another level with her push towards invoking school spirit among students and staff. She has brought together her student body and staff via artwork in the hallways and connected to the community with family nights. She took a challenging school and has chiseled away in trying to bring it together to help the students feel a sense of pride and self-worth." Give Debbie a hand? I want to read about Mike now, too. Is that all right? We have a unique situation this year because Wallace Middle School Assistant Principal Michael Sullivan is the recipient of the 2020-2021 Administrator of the Year Award. Mike also received several nominations from his peers, all of which mentioned his commitment to student success, not to mention his expertise in scheduling, and Vineland High School will tell you that. Mr. Sullivan is accessible to his school community at all times, and a portion of his nomination reads, "During the pandemic, Mike has been the parent's best resource, assisting with Google Classroom codes, email passwords, connectivity issues, and so much more. Mike has a proven history of working for the betterment of his students. He strives to assume that all have no barriers to achievement. He has earned the respect and admiration of the entire staff. Team is Mike's middle name." We are proud to present the 2019-20 and 2020-2021 VAST Administrators of the Year, Deborah Quinn and Michael Sullivan.
Hey, real quick, we got some public comment. At this time, we need Angela Cascabas. Please come to the podium. We are suspending the order of our regular agenda, and we are going to do the public comment, agenda portion, at this time. Agenda and/or any. Thank you. Hello, you can come up to the podium, please.
Goodbye, everybody. Thank you for leaving us in the heat. Angela, honey, can you just get close to the mic, and you can go ahead and speak, okay?
Good evening, Dr. Grugio and the members of the Vineland Board of Education. My name is Angela Cascabas, and I am an eighth-grade student at Sergeant Dominic Pillow Middle School. Before I begin, I would like to thank you all for everything you do for us and for our schools. While I am only one out of the hundreds of eighth graders here in Vineland, I speak for all of us when I say that we deserve more. Yes, a drive-through ceremony is a step up from last year, and yes, we are thankful for what can be given to us. But you cannot continue to compare last year to this year. We are not in the same situation. While I have no doubt that the staff at Pillow will make it the best they can, that isn't why I'm here tonight. This has been a challenging year for many of us. We've been virtual, hybrid, in-person, and back again. We've had countless hours of zooming and meetings, staring at a screen, talking to icons of our classmates. We now sit behind plastic shields and smile through our masks. We've had no trips, no dances, and no field days, just to name a few. We just started to be able to play with the school gym equipment, while many of us have been playing organized sports since the fall. With the state opening up more and more every day, almost to 100%, there can be more for us if we use our resources and put in the effort. We aren't asking for a lot. We want to be recognized for all of our hard work together. We want to hear our names being called "together." We want to cheer for each other "together." We want to be proud of what we have done "together." A ceremony to celebrate our hard work in front of our classmates and family is never meant to upstage anyone. All the middle schools have large outdoor spaces to accommodate students and parents with the CDC guidelines. You can have the students sit with their own family and spread out over the space. All you need is a microphone and a lot of chairs. We don't need flowers or decorations. We just want to celebrate the class of 2021 as a whole. Life brings tears, smiles, and memories. The tears dry, the smiles fade, but the memories last forever. Please help us make those memories and reconsider your plan for the middle school recognition programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela, for sharing your concerns. Thank you. Do we have anyone else this evening who would like to address the board on the agenda or any items? Absolutely. Come on down.
We're going to bring forward Many School principal and vice-principal. For those of you who may not know, we had a fire at Many School yesterday, and it caused quite a bit of damage and disruption. And I believe these wonderful ladies would like to thank the enormous amount of people that helped us get through that situation.
Thank you, Dr. Grugio, and good evening, everyone, members of the board and members of the committee, the community, I'm sorry. As you know, as Dr. Grugio just said, Dr. William Many School sustained damage after a fire yesterday. On behalf of the staff and students at Many's, we would like to sincerely thank everyone who came together as a VPS family to assist in taking care of our students. The Landis administrative team, security, secretaries, Vineland Fire Department Maintenance, Vineland Police Department, SEDEXO, and Transportation jumped right in to help us manage the crisis. Our staff and students reacted quickly and appropriately by following our emergency plan to evacuate. The quick response kept everyone safe. Each month at Many's, we focus on a character trait. How fortunate and how appropriate, I should say, that the month of May at Many's is the month of gratitude. We are beyond grateful for the immediate assistance of the entire Vineland community, which ensured the safety of our Many School family. We would especially like to thank our Many's parents and guardians, who were patient and gracious and calmly awaited information throughout the ordeal. So on behalf of Ms. Lipassoni, myself, and our Many School family, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you on a job well done.
Many people here in this audience helped, so thank you very much. You opened up Landis School to us and took great care of us. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys did a wonderful job, and I appreciate the efforts of everyone. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else this evening before we retire into executive session? Seeing none at this time, we will return shortly. We are heading out for a little bit. See you in a bit.
Thanks everyone for being patient. We are back from executive session and ready to resume our May 5th combined board meeting. At this time, under special presentations, do I have any questions or comments concerning our HIB report this evening from the board? Seeing none, at this time, do I have a motion for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Fiucci? Fiocchi, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mrs. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes, Mr. Berman. All right, at this time, do we have any committee reports this evening? Okay, first to my right, Ms. Spinelli.
I have two committee reports, policy and personnel, met on Wednesday, April 28th. In attendance was Mr. English, Dr. Grucci, Dr. Sneeden, Dr. Rossi, Mr. Fiocchi, Mr. Musarell, and myself. We had a brief discussion on clerical and facilities management promotions. The second committee met, which is facilities, on April 27th at 4 o'clock. Members present is Dr. Gruccio, myself, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Fiocchi, Mr. English, Mr. Musarell, and Mr. Farnaccio. We discussed the following items: the agriculture program update at VHS, discussion of the ESSER grant funding, recap our capital budget for the 2022 school year, approval of the long-range facility plan, and we also talked about the summer operational
I'm going to give a brief report, final report, on our superintendent search. First, I would like to thank everyone who applied for the position for superintendent of our district. The committee started the process with 31 applicants, which after countless hours of reviewing applications led to an initial round of interviews via Zoom. Second and third round interviews were conducted in person. When the committee first met, our goal was to have a new superintendent in place by July 1. We met each goal on the timeline that we set. During the process, the three non-conflicted board members that were not on the committee were kept updated to the status of the search. They could at any time reach out to our school board rep with any question that they might have. The first and second round interviews were conducted by the committee. The third round of interviews were attended by all seven non-conflicted board members. At that time, we all had a discussion and made our selection. I would like to share that this process was not a couple of hours, a few days, or a week task. This was a very time-consuming process. We worked on this search weekdays, weekends, in all hours of the day and into the night. We read, reread, and reread again everything that each of the candidates provided with their application and may have supplied throughout the interview process. I would like to thank Jane Kirchner of School Boards, who made herself available to any one of us at any time. I would especially like to thank the members of the committee who were committed and devoted to the process, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Holmes, and Ms. Costa, and to Mr. English and the rest of the board and district for trusting us with finding our new superintendent. As I said last week, after this whole process was completed, we feel there is no doubt Mr. Yamas is the best fit for our district. Although I'm sure he knows the board will hold him accountable, we are excited having his experience, his passion for the students, his enthusiasm to hit the ground running, and to become engaged with our district.
Thank you, Ms. Cottis Patti. Do we have any other committee reports this evening? Mr. Soprano?
The Ad-Hoc Communications Committee reconvened on April 19. In attendance were Dr. Gruccio, Scott Mustarel, Nathan Frye, and GM Missouri from Administration. Board President Scott English and Board Member Alex Silva attended in person. Board Member Dennis Rivera participated remotely. This committee was formed prior to the pandemic with two goals: to address longstanding equipment and human resources issues in the department, and also to reintegrate the broadcast TV program with the curriculum at Vinland High School and create a mutually productive relationship between the classroom and field productions. Achieving this result will have two important outcomes: one, provide multidisciplinary skills and expansive, impressive portfolios of work for our high school students, and create content that will be interesting and useful for students, staff, and the community across various media platforms available to the district: online, on cable TV, and from a library of voice and full-motion video-recorded messages. One would need to look no further than the crisis of the past year to recognize the enormous necessity and the challenge of delivering information in a timely and comprehensive manner. At our meeting, Mr. Frye reported strong student interest in the high school classes related to this curriculum. This was welcome news, and also highlighted the need to replace our 16-year-old mobile broadcast van that has far exceeded its useful life as a production resource because of digital technology. Much of our discussion was focused on the type of vehicle we should acquire as a replacement, what existing equipment continue in service in the new platform, and what new equipment will be needed, and what supplemental financing might be available. Information on those options will be shared following our next meeting. This new van would obviously be used to record and broadcast programs related to student achievement, various extracurricular activities, and athletics. The vehicle will also be used as a learning lab for students at the high school level, provide a look ahead for students in other grade levels, and remind our community that we are committed to robust delivery of information about the good things going in, going on, in our classrooms and offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soprano. Do we have any other committee reports this evening? Ms. Costa. Oh, and for the record, Ms. Costa did return 6:50 to the meeting. Thank you.
The Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee met on April 26. Discussed at the meeting was the Summer 1 Academy, as well as the Summer School Year 1. And just basically, I'm going to ask the president to add to our agenda. Just, I would like to have a presentation by Mr. Frye with respect to what we're doing over the next, really, two years to address some of the learning loss and some of the learning issues with respect to virtual learning that students have experienced. So there will be a Summer Academy, and students that did, either are not doing well, or have not fared well in the virtual environment, will be invited to attend. In addition, there's going to be, for the next two years, we anticipate adding additional resources to all of the schools to help address any learning loss caused by the pandemic. So we discussed School Year 1, Summer 2 Academy, and also the School Year 2. So we're anticipating that it's going to take us at least two years to really cover everything and make up for some of the loss that we've experienced. We can't do it all in one month. It's not going to happen. But hopefully, for our June 1 meeting, Mr. Frye will be able to address any issues that parents may have, and really discuss the purpose of this endeavor. I know it's been a lot of work, and it's been collaboration amongst principals, teachers, there's a whole committee, and they've been working very hard to put together a program to help address any learning loss. We also discussed the state data submission. So the state requested data with respect to how our kids are doing, since there was no state examinations, there was no park exam. So we did provide that, and we were happy to see that there were many students that actually thrived in the virtual environment and were above grade levels. So that was really good. We discussed the science and social studies curriculum in elementary schools. We discussed the social studies curriculum revisions. There's going to be extensive revisions in social studies. So that's pretty much it.
Ms. Costa, I apologize. Just real quick, and we sit this close, and I still, I'm sorry, but I couldn't hear you. What you're looking for is a presentation for me. Mr. Frye, is that something you would be ready to present? Is it a two-parter? How do you, we'll discuss how you want to handle that, and we can, we'll discuss it, our agenda setting. And again, I have no problem with that. And Ms. Costa, if you just want to just shoot me an email, Dr. Grucci, so we know exactly what you want to call that, that way?
Absolutely. I just want the parents to understand exactly what the district is proposing for students. You know, I mean, we've, there are tons of ideas that are still, it's kind of a fluid plan, and it's developing, it's still developing. But Mr. Frye, along with this committee, has worked extremely hard at trying to put together a program that will help address the needs of the students. So, you know, and also offer potential enrichment to other students that may want it. So there are a lot of ideas, and I think that Mr. Frye providing some kind of idea to the families as to what to expect, and, you know, the timeframes, et cetera.
Thank you for the detailed report, and I totally understand it now. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Seeing none, do I have any word solicitor comments this evening?
Yes, I do. I wanted to mention to the board that, under the superintendent search contract with School Boards Association, excuse me, there is one post-employment service that School Boards has agreed to provide. Within 90 days of Mr. Lano's employment, School Boards has offered to assist the board and him in setting goals for his first evaluation for the 2021 school year. So that is the one remaining item under the contract, and the board is free to accept that service, or to set the goals between him and the board yourselves. But I wanted to mention that it's the one item that's left post his employment. So there should be some discussion about that, whether you want to go with their assistance, or whether you want to continue to set goals year to year as you have in the past.
Okay, basically, what we do, for our knowledge, I thank you for that, I understand that. We do have, we have to get our ethics and our retreat scheduled. So I'm going to talk with Ms. Kirchner, because she was supposed to be here this evening but could not make it. So I just want to make sure I'm no longer conflicted out of that process, correct? So I can talk to her directly, what I would like to do moving forward?
With respect to the retreat? Yes.
Yes, with the retreat?
You know, that's one possibility, that she could offer some assistance at the retreat and do one-stop shopping.
That's what I'm going to try and do, so.
Get your retreat done, because the superintendent will be there for that retreat.
Yes.
And will be able.
All right, what I'll do is, I will contact my fellow board members. We're going to, we're going to, we'll try and lock down a date for July, and just try and move through and get it done all in one combined meeting. I think that would work out great. Thank you for the information, and I will be in touch with my fellow board members concerning that. Okay, we already took care of public comment. At this time, motion resolutions by our superintendent, Dr. Grucci.
Okay, thank you. I would like to recommend discussion of the following items: retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment, transfers, student substitutes, and extracurricular activities.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following contract: Executive County Superintendent approval has been obtained for Dawn Leary, our school business administrator slash board secretary, for the term May 10 through June 30, I'm sorry, May 10, 2021 through June 30, 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following appointments for the 2122 school year: Dawn Leary, Board Secretary, Custodian of School District Records, Contracting Agent, and Public Agenda Compliance Officer; Carmen DiGiorgio, Custodian of School Moneys; Scott Mustarel, to fill the following roles when needed in the absence of Dawn Leary: Board Secretary, Custodian of School District Records, Transfer Investment of Funds, and Authorized District Depositories; Dr. Joseph Rossi, Conscientious Employee Protectin' Act Contact Person, Section 504 Employee Compliance Officer, Appointing Authority/Civil Service Hearing Officer; Terry Goduski, Section 504 Student Compliance Officer; Daniel Sneeden, Working Papers Issuing Officer, Title IX Coordinator, Anti-Bullying Coordinator, and School Safety Specialist; Daniel Sneeden and Dr. Rossi, Affirmative Action Officers; Paul Farnachios, Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator, Right-to-Know Officer, Integrated Pest Management Coordinator, Indoor Air Quality Designee, POCIA Officer, Asbestos Management Officer, and Chemical Hygiene Officer; and Dr., I'm sorry, Keith Solerino, to fill the following role in the absence of Dawn Leary, he would be the contacting agent. Is it gone? Yeah. Sorry, Keith, I just gave you a doctorate, is that okay? No stipend, just the doctorate. Okay, no discussion.
Do I have a motion?
No, we didn't finish. We got just any discussion on that?
Questions or comments?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just a quick comment with respect to, under item 1, no, I'm sorry, 1.10, Public Agenda Compliance Officer, the PACO. We just need to change that resolution, just amend it to reflect the name Dawn Leary.
On the attachment, it says.
Thank you, duly noted.
Sorry, forgot. Discussion regarding the appointment of Dawn Leary for the time period May 10, 2021 through June 30, 2021, as the district's qualified purchasing agent, and to establish the bid threshold at the amount pursuant to NJSA 18A:18A-3A, and any increase authorized at NJSA 18A:18A-3B.
Questions or comments?
Discussion regarding the appointment of Dawn Leary for the time period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, as the district qualified purchasing agent, and to establish the bid threshold at the amount pursuant to NJSA 18A:18A-3A, and any increase authorized by NJSA 18A:18A-3B.
Questions or comments?
Discussion of a resolution regarding a grievance filed by the Vinland Education Association at Level 3.
Questions or comments?
Okay, I'd like to recommend approval of items 1.1 through 1.6.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cottis Patti, second by Mr. Holmes. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Soprano?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
And Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend discussion of trips and district travel.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the second reading of the following policies, regulations, and bylaws. Mandated changes of Regulation 511.2 mandating school uniforms that was revised to add the word leggings.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of items 2.1 through 2.2.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Soprano?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
And Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the Department of Ed's review of a major amendment to our Long Range Facilities Plan submitted by the Vinland School District pursuant to Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act, as amended by PL 2007-137, Act NJAC 6A:26-1, Educational Facilities Code, and the Facility's Efficiency Standards.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of item 3.1.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Berman?
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Finocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Soprano?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia? Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
And Mr. English?
Yes.
I would like to recommend discussion of budgetary transfers for the general school based in Ekpa budgets for the month of March 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the Board Secretary and Treasurer reports for March 2021.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding submission of the following I would like to recommend discussion regarding submission of the following grant applications: strengthening teaching for English, language, and literacy achievement and approval, no, I'm sorry, and discussion regarding the submission of the NJYC grant as provided and on file with the Secretary of the Board, which is the New Jersey Youth Corps.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding entering into an agreement with Golden Gate Inc. in support of the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant, which will provide targeted assistance enrichment programs from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Per the terms of the agreement, there will be no cost to the district.
That's a good thing. Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the MOU between the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office and the Vineland City School District.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the healthcare staffing agreement between the City of Vineland Board of Ed and Startlight Home Care Agency, Inc., which will provide licensed practical nurses at $48 an hour, registered nurses at $60 an hour for special education students in a form that is acceptable by the Board Solicitor and Superintendent for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services contract between the Vineland Board of Ed and Healthcare Consultants, Inc., New Jersey Corporation doing business as newborn nurses for nursing services at a rate of $42 per hour for an LPN and $52 per hour for an RN for the 2021-2022 school year.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services agreement between preferred home, healthcare, and nursing services at the Vineland Board of Ed to provide nursing services for special education students in the amount of $54 an hour for LPN, $59 an hour for RN from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, in a form acceptable by the Board Solicitor and Superintendent.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services agreement with Brett DeNovi and Associates to provide board-certified behavior analysts and behavior support services to classified students within the district during the extended school year program. This related service will be funded by ESSR and COVID Relief Grant Funds.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the renewal contract with Blackboard, Inc. for the district's alcohol service from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, in the amount of $17,626.96.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the renewal of Southern Council Regional Employee Benefits Fund in accordance with the bylaws of the fund by way of resolution, the endemony and trust agreement with the City of Vineland Board of Ed effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services contract to Ford Scott and Associates, LLC for our auditor services.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional service contract to Gruccio, Pepper, DeSanto, Ruth for Labor Council Negotiations.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding professional services contract to Gruccio, Pepper, DeSanto, and Ruth for Board Solicitor.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional service contract to KPAR and Statzer PA for our alternate council.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services contract to Dr. Timothy Rhine for medical services as chief school physician.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services contract to Dr. Joseph Bernardinoini and Dr. Brad Bernardinoini for medical services as alternate school physicians.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding a professional services contract to Inspira Healthcare Occupational Health Services, Dr. Balagon, for medical screening services.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion of a three-year renewal for the following contracts at the current contract price from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022. Online educational services with Edgacer, substitute staffing services with ESS, school-based mental health services with Ascenda Integrated Health, maintenance of support and district IT services, the pro computer services of PCS, and homebound instruction, ARC Education. See if there's more back here. Okay. I would like to, oh, I'm sorry, any comments or anything?
No, everybody.
All right, I would like to recommend discussion of year-two renewals for the following contracts at the current price from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, with an option to renew for one-year term for a maximum of a three-year contract. For before and after-school care, Alphabet Education, Asphalt Paving Services, Asphalt Paving Corporation, Painting Services Capri Construction, Elementary Cross-Curricular Digital Learning, Learning A to Z LLC, Athletic Field Maintenance Services TLC Landscape Company, Foundational Literacy and Professional Development, Wilson Language Training Corporation, Fuel Services, Riggins, Inc.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following contract for alternative high school services for the term July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2023, with an option to renew two one-year terms or two year terms, two one-year terms for a maximum of four, a four-year renewal. This is Contractor Specialized Education in New Jersey, that is our current Camelot program.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the awarding of the following contract for HVAC services for the term July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, Contractor Svalaska Mechanical, Incorporated.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the awarding of the following contract for liability broker for the term July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, with the option to renew two one-year terms or one two-year term for a maximum of a five-year term. The liability broker is beyond the insurance agency.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the tuition contract for educational services provided to the Department of Children and Families and the City of Vineland Board of Education for five students and amounts listed and on file with the Board Secretary for the 2020-2021 school year.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives: Bid Number Six, Quoted Contracts, Addenda, Spring Bus Evacuation Drills, Participation Agreements, Jointure Approvals, and Approval to Bid.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of items 4.1 through 4.25.
Well, that was a mouthful there.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Cottis Patti, Mr. Holmes. Roll call, please, Mr. Berman.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Feoki?
Yes, but I will be abstaining on 4.19 C and D, 4.20 letter B, and 4.23.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes, but I'll be abstaining from Section 4.16 due to the fact that he is my personal physician.
Thank you. Mr. Sbrana?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia? Mrs. Spinelli?
Yes to everything, but I am going to say no to 4.16.
Thank you. And Mr. English?
Yes to all and no to 4.16.
All items have been passed.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. We have no proposed items for review. At this time, do I have a motion for the approval of bills that occur for the month of March 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Cottis Patti and Mr. Holmes. Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Feoki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sbrana?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
And Mr. English?
Yes, sir. We have no emergent items this evening. Do I have any older new business by my fellow board members? Seeing none, we will go to board member remarks. I will start right in front of me with Mr. Feoki.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holmes?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Silva?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Sbrana?
Yes, congratulations to our Teachers of the Year, our Professionals of the Year, and also congratulations to Mrs. Speakman, our VASA President, for recognizing the Administrators of the Year for 2019, 2020, and also for this year. It's an awful lot of awards, but it's nice to see, and nice to see a full house for a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sbrana. Mr. Rivera?
I'd also like to congratulate all those that were recognized tonight, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Ms. Cottis Patti to my right.
I'm going to echo Mr. Sbrana and Mr. Rivera. Thank you very much to all of our teachers and staff, and congratulations to our educators, our professionals, our administrators of the year, and let's, Happy Teacher, Nurse, and Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Thank you, guys, for everything that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Cottis Patti. Ms. Costa?
Again, I echo my fellow board members in congratulating all the teachers, power professionals, and administrators that were honored both for last year and this year. And the only other thing, I would just ask that all of you keep the family in prayer of the young person that we lost just recently. It's a big loss to our community and our Vineland family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Spinelli?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Gruccio?
I would just like to echo everybody's comments. I congratulate everyone who was recognized tonight, and just, I really do have to tell you that having that fire yesterday, it was a really nice feeling to see how everybody just stepped up to the plate, pulled together, and made it a seamless process to get all of those kids home. And I mean, everybody stepped up. So I won't start naming names, but everybody just got up and was willing to help, and everything went smoothly. So I'm thankful no one was hurt, and I appreciate the help that everybody pitched in and gave. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. And in closing, I echo all the sentiments of my fellow colleagues, and most importantly, Ms. Costa brought it up, and I want to send it home. I definitely, a sincere thought and prayers go out to the entire family of Danielle Diaz. It's hard enough to lose a loved one, but to think of burying your own child, it's just not the right order. So when you go home tonight, give your children an extra hug, your loved ones, and thank God. My thoughts and prayers go out to that family. At this time, do I have a motion for adjournment this evening?
Can you hold that?
All in favor?
Hold.
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'd like to take a moment, first of all, to thank this Board of Education for allowing me to serve as your interim. This is my last meeting. Hopefully, those people who I unfortunately didn't pronounce their names well enough, forgive me. Having been superintendent for a little while, you forget the art of getting the names correct all of the time. But I have to do mention one important thing. I have worked with a number of business offices, and I have to commend the strength of your business office. I have not worked with finer professionals who care, plus the support under that business office, everything from the person who deals with your facilities. I am very much well impressed. I think you've done due diligence in finding really, really good people, and they served this district well. And again, I thank you for the honor of working with you and getting to know some of you slightly, although we all live in the same community. Thank you.
And Mr. Berman, on behalf of my colleagues, we thank you as well for stepping into the role, especially during a tough time, the budget time. I know Mr. Mustrell and the department really appreciated the help, and we thank you for doing an excellent job, and we know where to find you in the future if need be. With that being said, do I have a motion for adjournment this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good evening.